Like to call this meeting the Cholo City Council to order, show that all council members are present. The exception of Councilman Whip will ask for excuse tonight. Tonight, I've asked Councilman Clark to lead us in invocation, and I'll lead us in the pledge. If you'd all like to stand to join us, you may do so.
Our Father in Heaven, we're thankful for this opportunity we have to gather and discuss the needs of the community for the city of Cholo. We're grateful for the blessing it is to be able to meet in the conditions that we do. And thankful for the citizens of Cholo, the men and women who make this such a great community to live. Thankful for our first responders for the time and dedication that they and their families sacrifice on behalf of our community to make it a safe and enjoyable place to live. We pray that that will please bless them and watch over and keep them safe. We pray that as we deliberate tonight, that will help us to be guided and directed in the affairs of the city. That we will be able to reach conclusions that are in the best interest of the community and that are in the best interest of the citizens at large. We pray for thy guiding hand and help, pray that we will always be able to seek thy will when we are looking to carry out the functions of this government. We pray and ask for these things in the name of thy Son, Jesus Christ, Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Clark. Okay, the first item on the agenda is call the public, City Attorney.
Thank you. Any citizen desiring to speak on a matter that is within jurisdiction of the city of council may do so at this time. Comments shall be limited to three minutes per person and shall be addressed to the city council as a whole and not to any individual members. Issues raised shall be limited to those within the jurisdiction of city council. Pursuant to the Arizona Open Meeting Law, the city council cannot discuss or act on items presented at this time. At the conclusion of the call to the public, individual city council members may respond to criticism made by those who have spoken, ask staff to review a matter, and ask that a matter be put on a future agenda item.
Thank you, City Attorney. Next item on the agenda under special events and presentation by Cholo Police Department and Timber Mesa Fire and Medical District regarding, easy for me to say, wildfire preparedness. Chief Chevalier, Chief Provost.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for allowing us an opportunity to come and speak to you about wildfire concerns. Chief Provost and I and his team have been working together for some time now, talking about, obviously it's dry. We saw what's going on over California, but how to prepare ourselves. We work together on a regular basis, we respond together on a regular basis, we work in instant command together on a regular basis. But this year feels like it might be just a little bit different. We saw all the things burning over in California. Of course, we had some crews over there, a lot of the mountain resources had crews over there, just a tragedy, right? And it's dry, it's a tinderbox. We did get a little bit of moisture last week, which was fantastic, and hopefully that type of moisture will continue. But we can't place our bets on that hope of moisture, and hopefully that definitely does come our way. The energy release component, I think that term's been used quite a bit lately, is normally in the 90th percentile when we're in May, June. That's typically when we might start seeing some restrictions go into place. Now, we did get some moisture last week, but that energy release component was in the 90th percentile in December and in January. And I've lived here for my whole life, and I don't recall another time it was necessarily like that. I don't necessarily know if we always knew what energy release component was, but we do now, and it looks pretty dang dry. And so it's conceivable that we might be going into restrictions sooner than later. But there's a lot of things going on to try to plan and prep for a wildfire that might impact this community. And I want to take a little bit of a different approach this time. Typically, we'll stand in front of you and talk about, hey, we're staffed up like this, we respond this way, here's what you should expect, here's the fire danger. I actually want to walk through a little bit of a presentation of how a response actually works from Timber Mesa in conjunction with our law enforcement partners. It's a hypothetical scenario, this is not real, but I do want to stress, this could be real, this could absolutely come to fruition. But I think it's really good to hear and see what happens when, of course, we get dispatched out of the Cholo PD Regional Dispatch Center, a lot of the local fire departments do, and we all respond together. But what does that sound like? How do we operate? And how does that command system come up that's then going to start affecting our city management, our city council, our mayor? Proclamations, call for emergency preparedness, there are different things that are taking place. So this is just a little bit of a different approach to draw some attention to how this thing could escalate. And so again, I just want to stress, this is absolutely hypothetical, but it could be a real scenario that we could deal with. So you're going to hear some tones, that's just how we get toned out. We carry pagers, Mayor Leach will remember from way back, there's a pager we carry. Those tones open up their pagers, and we can start listening to the calls. So you're getting to hear a couple of different tones, you can hear some response taking place, and I'll walk you through what you're hearing after we kind of hear it. Maybe. I hope we'll have some tones.
Alarm. Engine fifteen.
Apologize for this. There we go.
Engine fifteen, Timber Channel, brush fire, south of Sierra Pines, west of the power line road. Engine fifteen, Timber Channel.
So Engine fifteen's our downtown station right here, just up the hill. It runs the busiest calls, and so you just heard they got dispatched to a brush fire. Anytime a brush fire occurs, of course, it's going to start hitting social media really fast. You're going to see it, we're all going to know about it. It's going to start circulating because it's, I mean, it's dry, and so as soon as you kind of get that smoke in the air, everybody's going to start being aware of it. And so when these tones open up, obviously Engine fifteen are responding to, but everybody else is now aware of it. It's going to be in our MDTs that we carry in our apparatus, so every law enforcement officer's going to see it. All the rest of the regional mountain resources are going to see it, and they're going to start paying attention because they know how dry it is. This fire, you just heard it, south of Sierra Pines in the wooded area on that power line road. If you've lived here for a while, you're familiar with that area. I'm going to show you a map here, so you can look at this map. And this is kind of concerning to me from a lot of different perspectives. It's south of town, it is in that 948 acres that is now privately owned, that's going to be developed at some point in time. But in that area, it's heavy fuel, it has a lot of terrain in there, and it points right towards town. So we have a typical southwest wind that comes through our area, and so that potential fire could run right up into our town, affecting Sierra Pines, Timberline Trailer Park, the Pine, Pine Oaks, there's a number of areas. So in the right conditions, that fire's going to move. You all remember what June 18th is, right? June 18th is the day the Rodeo Cheddar Sky fire started. So I kind of put that in there as a reminder of what the severity could be from a fire starting on June 18th, 1:00 in the afternoon, probably 90 degrees outside plus, humidity's are going to be low, and it's going to be a bit windy. So now, time is crucial. We want to fight a fire in its incipient phase, we want to jump on it as early as possible, put as many resources on it as we can to fight that to keep it small. But in these types of conditions and those types of terrain, that might be a little bit difficult to do. And so we're going to be very aggressive in our response. So this next tone that you're going to hear is our engine captain showing up on scene. He's going to give an on-scene report, and then he's going to upgrade the assignment, and I'll talk about what that means.
Alarm, Engine fifteen.
Engine fifteen, you are clear on Timber. Alarm copies in route.
Might recognize that.
1434.
Voice a little bit, that's Captain Marky Rové on the radio.
Alarm, Engine fifteen.
Engine fifteen.
Show Engine fifteen on scene with a large working fire in grass, shrubs, and timber, moving to the northeast with multiple exposures threatened. Engine fifteen will stretch a hose lay on the right flank for fire control in the offensive strategy. Upgrade the assignment to a first alarm, and Engine fifteen will have Vista Command.
So the few things that scared me in that radio traffic.
Alarm copies, Engine fifteen, on scene of a large fire moving to the northeast with multiple exposures. Engine fifteen has stretched a hose lay to flank the fire. Engine fifteen will assume Vista Command, standby for tones.
You heard him indicate the fire's in grass, it's in shrubs, and in timber. When we respond to a fire in a wildland-type setting, if that fire's in the four-foot range, we can have a good effect on it with our hose lanes, with our hand tools. But once it gets above that four-foot kind of flame length that we're dealing with, that's typically going to start calling for dozers, hotshot crews, aircraft. And so it's already with that type of on-scene report, it's already kind of raising the back on our head, on the back of our neck a little bit going, goodness, this could be a little bit of a problem for us, and we're going to start bringing in more resources. So we upgraded the assignment. When we upgrade an assignment, we're going to start bringing in all the rest of the resources. Team of staffs on a regular basis, three engines, a ladder truck, and six ambulances. We're busy with EMS. Those ambulance can drop themselves, jump on a brush truck, or water tinner start coming. And when they upgrade, we're going to pretty much dump our system onto that fire. And then we're going to start bringing in some extra resources. So you'll listen to this next slide, what that kind of sounds like when we actually upgrade that assignment.
Engine seventeen, truck fourteen, brush nineteen, brush thirteen, battalion fifteen, fire sixteen, rescue fourteen, Timber Channel. Upgrade to a first alarm brush fire, power line road, south of Sierra Pines. Engine seventeen, truck fourteen, brush nineteen, brush thirteen, battalion fifteen, fire sixteen, rescue fourteen, Timber Channel.
That's a whole bunch of units, that is pretty much all of our units in the Timber Mesa system responding to this, and this is happening pretty fast. This is all done within about the first five minutes of a response. And when we responded into these types of incidents, we're looking at the smoke, right? It's one of the biggest things we're looking at, what is that smoke doing? If it's kind of a little bit of a lazy smoke laying down, it might not be burning too aggressive. We're still really concerned about it, but if that smoke is producing a lot of black smoke, and you've seen it, you saw the videos from the fires over in the Palisades. You might remember the smoke from the Rodeo Cheddar Sky, that real thick, dense black smoke, producing a lot of convection column. That is in the timber that is moving, and that is putting a lot of ember cast out in front of that, which is really concerning to us. While those units are responding, we're doing a couple other items. It's either myself, it could be one of my other chief officers is going into the dispatch center with our dispatch individuals. And we're moving resources from Pine Top to Heber to Taylor Snowflake. We might even start bringing resources from the Round Valley St. John's this direction, just in case to, we need to get that quicker response going on it. So we're supporting our dispatchers by getting some individuals there. We're working with law enforcement in the field, trying to figure out, is this fire going to go anywhere? What's going to happen to it, and if it is, what's going to happen with some evacuations? Going back to the flaming front and ember cast just a little bit, that is really what we're concerned about. Flaming front might be higher than what we can put crews in front of, but it's going to be that ember cast. It's going to be as that torch, the tree's torching out and sending embers out in front of itself. And this is what scares me from a structure-to-structure ignition, that's what happened in California. All that ember cast is going to start landing on those homes, and you think about the Timberline Trailer Park, you think about the pines. The pines, they have fireplaces in there in the condos to keep warm in there. And a lot of times, there's wood on the front porch of those condos. Well, that ember cast is going to land on that wood and potentially cause some fires right there. And so that's what we're concerned about, and so if we can get in front of this and keep it small, that is fantastic, right? But that ember cast is what's really going to start causing these problems. So we're going to have to figure out how to deal with it from an evacuation perspective and how to continue to fight this fire. And again, we're probably only five, six, seven minutes into this incident, where we might start seeing some major problems. So they upgraded the assignment, they're bringing some resources in, we're supporting our dispatch center, which is going to get inundated at this point in time from multiple 911 calls. And they have a procedure to bring back dispatchers to kind of work through that call line to take place. But this is going to become front and center of what's going on in the city from every single aspect, from public information. You know, social media's going to go crazy at this point in time, and it's going to, everybody's going to be starting to worry about what is going to happen next. Let's take to the next piece, kind of this is the beginning of the incident command process. I believe all the city council members, I think all the city staff has taken the NIMs 100, the NIMs 200-type classes. And that's the framework to incident command that kind of got established back in the 911 days with the presidential directive. This unified command's going to initially take place in the field. That engine company officer's going to go match up with a law enforcement officer, and they're going to come up with a game plan and start putting an initial action plan together on how they're going to deal with the resources. Then, like I said, the 911 system's not going to stop, and so we've got to put some other resources into play to take care of the 911 calls, the sickness calls, EMS calls that are all taking place. We're going to use our automatic aid and mutual aid partners to help us with those scenarios. But at this point in time, me personally, I'm going to be feeling really overwhelmed from the response from the fire. And so I'm going to do something right away. There's going to be forest service units responding in, there's going to be state units coming in, all working with this framework. But I'm going to call the state, and we have a phone tree that we'd use, and I'm going to ask them to take this fire, right? Because at this point in time, we're going to be thinking about bringing in aircraft and dozers, and when we do that, we need it because our goal is to save savable lives. We want to save property, but we've got to save those lives first and foremost, and so we need aircraft. When you bring aircraft in, there's going to be a dollar amount associated with that. And there's no way Timber Mesa's budget or the city of Cholo's budget could maybe fund that type of use of those aircrafts. And so I'm calling the state, and I'm asking for help. I'm going to sign over what's called a delegation authority to allow them to take the fire, and they're going to start managing it from that perspective. And they're going to look for a team. You remember during the Rodeo Cheddar Sky fire, we had four type-one teams that came in and kind of worked in a clockwork to help manage that fire. So at this point in time, we imagine there's probably going to be a team coming in, and it could be the White Mountain Zone Type III team. We have a zone team up here that includes members of different fire districts, foresters, tribal members, a good competent team. But it probably is going to overextend their capabilities a little bit, but at least we can get those resources here and start managing this fire appropriately. And then, if it really starts really kicking off a lot, that's when that complex incident management team, that type-one team would come in. That's going to be a couple days in an incident. In the meantime, this is our fire, and we're going to work it with all of our local resources, and we're stripping the system at that point in time. So we're going to call for help, and we're going to call for it early. I'd rather call for it early and then start canceling if we didn't need it versus wishing I would have pulled that, made that phone call a little bit sooner. So we're going to get, going through the rest of the incident here, you're going to hear a couple, another tone here.
Alarm, Vista Command, with a follow-up report.
Vista Command, go ahead with your report.
The fire is extremely active, moving to the northeast. It is being driven by high and gusty winds out of the southwest, high flame lengths and torching trees.
Alarm copies, extremely active fire driven by high wind speeds. The forest service has been notified.
Vista Command, Battalion fifteen. Battalion fifteen, go ahead.
Battalion fifteen copies your report and will assume Vista Command. Alarm, Battalion fifteen.
Battalion fifteen.
Incident command post will be set up at the Cholo Police Department. The Sierra Pines, Pine Oaks, and Timberline neighborhoods will be threatened soon and need to be evacuated. Highway 260 needs to be shut down between Farm Brook and Wilford Roads, and can you put Summit Hospital on notice?
Alarm copies at 1437.
So there's a lot of things that just happened at that point in time. The fire's moving, we're worried about evacuations, we'll start getting contact with the Navajo County Emergency Operations Center, Katrina's start working on the notifications for potential evacuations. But we're going to call for evacuations, and you just heard him indicate that he's potentially going to shut down a portion of Highway 260. It's one of the major arteries through our town, and we're potentially going to clog it up. The reason he's calling for that to be shut down is so we can get emergency resources in and help evacuation individuals getting out. But we all know, as soon as that highway gets shut down, that's going to cause some major concerns for anybody. Also, this fire's in the middle of the day, and a lot of us are at our workplaces. A lot of us are at work, and our kids might be home, and we're calling for some evacuations. People might want to get back to their homes to go get their stuff, and they might not be able to go do that. And we'll talk about some of the preparations, what we need to be thinking about from that scenario. But we just caused some quite a bit of disruption with this type of incident. And again, this is directly south of town, you've got the prevailing winds, you've got the terrain, it's got plenty of fuel, and then plenty of, when I say fuel, there's plenty of homes. Homes are also fuel, and so there's plenty of opportunity for that to burn. Timber Mesa's going to be very aggressive about it, and we're going to use every partner we have possible to us to come in and help fight this fire. But it could overwhelm us from a systems perspective, but we're going to work through it the best that we can. As soon as those evacuations start occurring, Chief Provost and his team are really going to start getting active, and he can kind of touch on some of the law enforcement considerations that might come into play.
So the chief mentioned, there's, when this happens, there's a lot going on, and it all happens at once. And the thing is, is it doesn't just happen at once on scene. There's a lot of work and preparation that has to go in before this, a situation like this even comes along. So one of the things we have in this area, we have a multidisciplinary group that meets. Right now, it's biweekly, but during fire seasons, it's once a week. And that's, that group consists of law enforcement, fire, forest service, state land, county emergency management, the weather service, tribal representation. We all come together and we'll look at what are the fire conditions, what are we looking at for special events? What are our population levels up here? You know, what are we expecting for precipitation? All those factors, and that's what we use to decide if we go into restrictions or not. In addition to that planning, we've already started, as you've probably seen, working with our public information officers. And we have another working group of just PIOs that work on messaging to the public, what can you do to be ready? How can you prepare for this? What do you need to have on hand? And then, that messaging is coordinated, so we're all saying the same thing, and we're not sending out confusing messages to the public. When a situation like this hits, those PIOs become critical because they're the ones immediately, immediately start pushing out to the public what they need to do. So one of the things we are working on and have been working on, if we have to evacuate, our city and our county is divvied up into zones, evacuation zones, we use a program called Genesis. And so all of our supervisors and law enforcement are being trained on how to use Genesis, which they have a fire, they pull it up, shows them what evacuation zone, how many houses, how many people are in that area, how many vehicles. Then they can start pushing out to the public, if we have to evacuate, where do you go? What's the, you know, what shelters are available? But other things we have to think about too, where do people take their pets? Where do they take livestock? We have to coordinate with the different agencies, such as the Sheriff's Office, DPS, park, state parks, all those. We're going to have a large number of law enforcement coming in to help us evacuate. So at that point, we as a city fall under the emergency operations plan. So that's why we're all working under the same plan. But that doesn't mean we give up control of what happens in the city, but we have to coordinate with them because as soon as we start evacuating, it becomes evident, the mayor's going to have to declare an emergency, then it has to go to the county. And if the state's coming in, we have to declare an emergency to the state, and it continues to roll up. But we'll be working with Sheriff's Department primarily, and that's because the fire may start off, you know, outside the city, come through the city, go on to tribal land, they'll cross multiple jurisdictions. So ultimately, county will be the one that coordinates that, we will all work in together under county. But we all meet and we plan and do tabletops on this just for these type of events. So when we're out there on that scene, we've worked with these, our peers on these before, we've gone through these scenarios. So again, there's a lot of planning that goes in behind that. Another big player in this is going to be Public Works. So we start doing evacuations, public works. that. Another big player in this is going to be Public Works. So we start doing evacuations, Public Works is going to be a primary player in shutting down roads and then managing the water systems. So that's going to be critical. I know Public Works has been, that's a hot topic lately. They've been working on, you know, the water system, making sure that's prepared. So I will point out, you know, Randy talked about, if two sixty were closed, that's a major artery for evacuation. It also affects, if we have people needing to get the hospital from Heber or Apache County or, and all those things. You know, our council and our city staff have been working for the last couple of years, trying to get a bridge across Scott Ranch Road. But we understand, what people understand, that's not a luxury, that's a necessity. Because that artery is cut off, it makes it very difficult to evacuate people out of these areas. So there's been a lot of work in trying to beef up those evacuation lanes to inform the public on, you know, where they're going to go, have those evacuation shelters pre-planned and that. So there's a lot of that's going on behind the scenes.
Thanks, Chief Provost. You see that last bullet point there says water. And water is obviously a critical component of what we need. Simple concept, right? If something's on fire, we need, we need water. The City of Sholo, as you all are very well, has a great water system, and we're truly blessed to have that, what type of water system for our use. We're, we're a consumer of that on a regular basis, be it training or fires that might take place. And of course, we've got a lot of different water systems that are in the area, and a lot of them aren't quite as good as what the City of Sholo has. Dating back to the rodeo Cheddisky fire, I was an engine captain then, and one of my first assignments were to go shut off water meters at individuals' homes. And that was because they were running their sprinklers. And I'm not saying that's not necessarily a bad thing. Obviously, water's going to help with that ember cast type top process. But what was happening, it was draining the city's water system, or the Arizona water systems, or whatever system, pine top water, wherever it might be, starts draining that system. Well, then it's not available for us to use when we have it. And so it's kind of just that kind of cautionary piece of, you heard it on the news a little bit, the fire hydrants were dry in California. But when you run those sprinklers, or after a structure burns, if that water meter's not shut off, well, that water is going to free flow. And so we're going to be working with Public Works very closely, paying attention to that water type resource. And so maybe before evacuations happen, it might not be the best thing to run those sprinklers, because there is a cause and effect of that, and we'll need that water to help fight the fire. So just wanted to kind of touch on that a little bit of, of maybe what had happened in California. So we need the community's support. Timber Mesa is going to be overwhelmed, our local response system is going to be overwhelmed, and we're going to be very aggressive in our response. And so I just want to touch on a couple of things. And we use this example on purpose, right? Because it is directly south of town. But the City of Sholo, as you're probably aware, Timber Mesa has partnered with the Department of Forestry and Fire Management to do fuel mitigation in this plot of land. Right now, we're working on a little over a hundred acres on this. The city's grant holder's been a phenomenal partner with us. And there's crews out there working on this right now, doing some mitigation. And our goal is to create a buffer around the edge, when a fire's burning on the ground, if we can kind of create a catcher's mitt and let that fire burn into that buffer, get it back down the ground. It's a lot more manageable from that perspective. And so they're cleaning up the ladder fuels, they're cleaning up, there's a term called basal area. And in this area, the basal area score of all the fuel in there is well over two hundred to three hundred. We need to get it down to sixty to eighty, and that's going to help a healthy forest and help us manage those fires. And so using this as a perspective of some of the things the City of Sholo and Timber Mesa are working together on to do what we can do in these areas. But we're going to need the community's help. There's a lot of information available, good programs, firewise programs, wildfire prepared homes. Call us, our Timber Mesa, I have my fire marshal here with me this evening. J.D. Pepper would love to go out to your house, do a survey, talk to you and give you those ideas. At a minimum, it's zero to five feet. If we can get that home, right around your home, zero to five feet, free of the ignition sources, I'll talk about my wife just for a second, on our back porch, we have cushions, we have a rug, those are all receptive to fire. She loves it, but it might not be the best thing from a fire type response type piece. And so if we can eliminate those types of hazards around our home, our homes are more likely to be savable. Then, if we can save it, that's less ember cast that we're having to work with from that ignition to ignition type scenario. In addition to that, home hardening, the right type of siding, keeping the siding clean, keeping it protected, asphalt shingles or middle roofs, making sure they're appropriate. There's so many things we can be doing to protect our homes. There's a lot of resources, and we would love to go out to your home and help you see these things. I know there's an issue with insurance going on right now as well. I don't necessarily know those answers on how to fix that problem per se, but what I do know with Firewise and some of the programs that exist, it can and does save homes. And we'll be working on, I'm part of the mitigation and residency council at the state level with the Department of Insurance and Financial Management, and we're working to try to figure out what's going on and get some solutions there. But I'm a true believer in, in fuel mitigation and home hardening. It will absolutely save communities. So call us, we'll come out and we'll help you out. And then I just have a link there for Ready, Set, Go. I don't necessarily want to get into the Ready, Set, Go program. I'm sure Katrina Jenkins with Navajo County Emergency Management will make her rounds, go through Ready, Set, Go. But that is what we're going to do when we evacuate. Always be ready. If we call for set, that's the preparation aspect, and then go is you've got to evacuate. So there's a good link to that, and I'll show you another link here in just a second to register for Ready Navajo County and kind of how that works. Oh, here it is, right here. Apologize. So please scan this QR code. This QR code will take you to Ready Navajo County, and you can, you can sign up to get those alerts. Chief Provost talked about it through the Genesis program. When we select those areas of evacuation, that goes to the county level, and they will start sending that notification out through their system and that through Ready Navajo County. Please register for that. Now, think about some things you need to take with you. And this might be necessary, not just to have in your home on a regular basis, but in your car when you go to work. And have that planned. We've pre-planned, I've been a firefighter my whole adult life, and so I've worked on the exit drills in the hole with my kids. We always have a meeting place. In a scenario of a wildfire, my kids know they've got to keep their cars full, they've got to have some cash with them. And if we call for evacuations, they know our meeting point is at Drama Sherry's house in Queen D. Drive there, go there, you'll be safe, call me when you get there. But we have a plan. And so I want to encourage everybody to have that plan. So if it does happen, and it might not be an if, it could be when it happens, you're prepared. And this could bring a lot, some stress to individuals. There might, there is anxiety. Everywhere I go on this topic right now, I get asked, "Chief, are you worried about the wildfire season?" Yes, a hundred percent, I'm worried about it. But if we have a plan and we execute that plan, we're going to reduce that stress, and we're going to act accordingly, because we worked on it, we know what we're supposed to be doing, and then we'll act on it. And we need the community to jump in. And there's a lot of them that are doing so many good things. Chief, or J.D. Pepper will be doing a presentation at the White Mountain Business Owners on some of this tomorrow. And so we're trying to get the message out. But at a minimum, get registered for Ready Navajo County and know what you need to take with you. Here's some helpful resources. You can always go to our website, the City of Sholo's website, and then there's several other links here to take you to some really cool Firewise type, fuel mitigation type resources. Of course, I asked to get a plug for the City of Sholo, please download the City of Sholo's app. Good information will come out on that. It'll help with evacuation type purposes. But at the end of the day, this is a real issue. This is reality. It is very dry. We did have moisture last week, it's not enough, right? That moisture, it did not get snow packed. It brought a little bit to the ground, and when the winds pick back up, which we know are going to, it's going to dry those out. We called one hour fuels for a reason. That sunlight gets on, the wind gets on, it's going to take about an hour, it's going to start burning. We just had a, Morgan mentioned it this morning, there was a brush fire near Hagan Hill yesterday. We saw all the rain, and there was a good brush fire down by Hagan Hill just, just yesterday. And so it is, it's still here, even after the moisture. With that, I just want to say thank you so much for allowing me to share a few words about this major topic. I'm pretty passionate towards it, because I want to save my community. But I'd love to answer whatever questions you may have. And if you want to give me some direction on what you guys want to see, I'd love to hear that, too.
Chief Provost, thank you guys very much. I know we had a conversation, I think it was in January, about, hey, we need to get going, you know, and, and I appreciate you guys starting early. Usually, this conversation's April, I get it, end of March maybe, and we're, we're, you know, end of February, we're having this conversation. Something else you can touch on, if you don't mind, I know there's a lot of concern about Sholo Lake. People think that it's drying up, it's going away, you know, it had to be repaired, and we didn't have a choice. The contractor had this date set, we couldn't predict we were going to have a dry winter. Can you tell us, I know you already touched on the water supply, but you, can you tell us a little bit about our lakes if something like this happens?
Yeah, so our lakes are crucial when it comes into that aspect, as we all know. When that fire's burning, and we can't necessarily get those ground resources next to it, and so we might be ineffective from a ground resource. You're going to see the helicopters, you're going to see the, the big slurry, the big retarded planes coming in, dropping retarded. Those are coming out of the valley, but those helicopters are going to go look for dip sites. Sholo Lake, Full Hollow, Scott Reservoir, Rainbow, they're all great dip sites. And Sholo Lake, and I don't have the exact numbers, you should have warned me on this question, I would have brought those numbers with you. But the numbers actually came from, from Mr. Cop. There is a lot of water in Sholo Lake. Sholo Lake's a very deep lake, and a Schnook helicopter, that's what, that's a big type one helicopter, and it has a bucket down on the bottom of it, or even an arm that comes down, it can draft water up into it. It's going to carry a thousand to three thousand gallons of water. And that's going to have to get ordered in, and that's part of the reason we're going to do that delegation of authority, so they can give the shift of those dollars, can go where it needs to be, because we need that resource. There's a lot of water in Sholo Lake. And Bill, I hate to put you on the spot, I don't know if you have those numbers in front of you. I do not, but there's a lot of water in Sholo Lake to have that effect for the use of those helicopters in our system.
Yeah, so if we use half of the available water in the permanent pool, the Schnooks carrying three thousand gallons per load could make eighty-two thousand trips.
Eighty-two, that's, that's an unbelievable amount or number. That is, that is a lot. And that's just from Sholo Lake. So Full Hollow's still, it's drying up, right? We know it's not, no water's coming out of Sholo Lake necessarily, going through Sholo Creek, getting down to Full Hollow. And so it's going to dry up as well, a little bit with evaporation, letting a little bit of water out. Scotch Reservoir, I think, was backed up just a little bit to help refill Sholo Lake through the irrigation process, but there's still good water there. Rainbow Lake, so I think we're in a really good position. And foresters will start making those contracts. The foresters will work those contracts, they'll make sure that's available as a dipping site, and they'll, we've seen it, right? We've seen it on social media, we've seen it when those fires occur, they'll start using those waters. And so it's a great resource, and there's a lot of water right there.
You know, the other comment that, I know this happened about a month or so ago west of town, but people were shooting off fireworks and nobody called. And it just bothered me that no, I, I heard about it through another friend, they were out there shooting fireworks in the driveway. So I would say to our community, if you see something going wrong, report it. You would hate to be that person that the next morning you wake up and their house is on fire because you didn't call. So if you see anything out there, report it. Chains dragging is very important. We've seen fires down sixty and two sixty people coming into town. So we have to report it, definitely.
We can start from chains, cigarette butts, fireworks. There's so many different ways a fire can start that, the one on near Hagan Hill was a flat tire, right? Sparks from the rim from the flat tire. So it could, fire does happen. I mean, that's why we're in business to some, some extent, right? And so it could happen. If we're in restrictions, even if we're not in restrictions, if you don't need to have that campfire, don't. We don't need those embers going anywhere. I love a good campfire, I love roasting some marshmallows, fantastic. But we don't need those kind of conditions right now. J.D. Pepper manages our burn, our open burning, and any sight of wind that could be disastrous to us, he shuts burning down right away. We get that information out. But if we don't need to be burning, we don't need to use fire, don't, because it is going to cause us a problem.
I think that was a great comment, because if, if you walk outside and it's windy, don't call the fire department, see if you can burn. Just don't. So thank you for that comment. Councilman Adams.
Just a quick question. What, how do we let people coming up camping and things like that, how do we let them know when they're coming into our area that, hey, we're, we're preparing for fire season, you know? You see these people come up, and they don't know that we're either shut down or maybe don't care, and they're building fires and doing stuff, and they're, they're a danger to our community. How are we notifying them driving up here?
That's a, that's a, that's a good question. And it's been a lifelong problem that we've experienced up here. And of course, we enjoy, right? We're, tourism up here helps us, right? In so many different ways. And so we don't necessarily want to discourage people from coming up to our beautiful mountain, but it's beautiful for a reason, right? And so we've got to figure out how to protect that. Our PIO group does some awesome work. Grace Payne with the city, Trinity with our organization, there's so many people, and they have those statewide connections, and they're going to start working on it on a regular basis to try to get that message down to the valley agencies, try to get this information out through three TV, twelve. There is, there is a major fire problem down in the Scottsdale area, right? Down in the foothills, the Tucson areas. And so those news networks are hitting on it. So if we can work with those chiefs in that area, last year, you saw Chief Shannon, he's the fire chief for Scottsdale. He went on a big campaign about protecting those foothills in the Scottsdale area. If I can start getting him to mention, hey, when you go up to northern Arizona, the same rules apply. So we're going to try to hit it from every angle we can, but it is a huge statewide problem. We used to think that wildfire was, was more, more of an impact in, in kind of the higher mountain terrains and some of those areas. Even in the valley systems, there's wildfire concerns, and it can cause them some major issues in that East Valley, Scottsdale area, Tucson area. And so we need to tap into those resources and help get them to share our messages as well, and we can, we can do that. But it's just not going to reach everybody, right? And so signs, our public talking, right? Our community members that are next to that Airbnb, talking to those neighbors of, here's the risk. I'm not looking for this fire, of course, right? But they've got to, they've got to share some of those concerns to protect our home. When Yarnell Fire burned, and that was a fire that overran those, the nineteen firefighters, Granite Mountain firefighters, that Yarnell Fire burned through Yarnell that night, we're a fire district, we're primarily funded from property taxes. Of course, the City of Sholo is funded through sales tax. When it burned that through, Yarnell Fire District lost thirty percent of its assessed valuation. That would crush a Timber Mesa. We would not be able to have the firefighters that we have to be able to respond to these fires if we took that type of hit. Not yet. And I ain't talking about the business owners that are going to lose their livelihoods, right? And your homes. And so it's a major issue. And so we all need to come together to work on it. And together, I know we can solve the problem, but we just have to join in together.
Thank you.
Randy, thank you guys very much. I appreciate, you know, I, I really appreciate your training. I know how you are about training, and I appreciate you guys getting us ready. And people always talk about, you know, the Ready, Set, Go program. When's ready now?
Right now.
And it's year round. You should always be ready. It's, no, we're in fire season year round, I believe. So you should be ready all the time. So I appreciate Chief Provost very much, Chief Chevalier. Chairman Adams, did you have anything you wanted to add to this at all? No? Okay. I just wanted to make sure, you know, you're, I appreciate you coming and supporting these guys very much, but I want to make sure you didn't have anything.
Our fire board and our chairman, he's here to show that support.
Is he waving at me with all his fingers? I can't really tell.
Good call.
Randy, I appreciate it. You guys, like I said, you do a great job. I feel comfortable. You know, I, I know our community should feel safe. We're going to be, we're, we're going to be ready. And, and it's sad that it's February and we're talking this, but you know what? Let's be ready. And if we see anything out there, we've got to call it in. It could be your next door neighbor, your best friend. Sorry, you know? We want to wake up with the beauty that we talked about.
This is our beautiful place, right?
Appreciate it. Any other questions? Thank you guys very much. Thank you. Couldn't get the chairman to talk, so I guess we'll move on. Sorry, Jamie, I was open, I had to say. I know. All righty, next item on the agenda is a consent calendar. We'll look for a motion to consideration of non-commercial hangar development and ground lease consideration of resolution number R twenty-five oh eight, approved in our government agreement with Navajo County Board of Supervisors, consideration of the minutes of the Sholo City Council meeting on February fourth, twenty twenty-five. Did I see a motion or anybody want to pull something? Got a motion by Councilman Adams, seconded by Councilman Hatch. All those in favor of the motion. All those opposed, motion passed unanimously. Next item on the agenda, new business is a public hearing, consideration of application submitted by Darren, next page, Van Warwick and Adam James Lewin for a number twelve restaurant liquor license on behalf of Sholo Pizza Factory for its location at one hundred North White Mountain Road, Sholo, Arizona. Mrs. Hall.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Darren Van Warwick and Adam James Lewin, representing Sholo Pizza Factory, submitted a liquor application for a number twelve restaurant liquor license for its location at a hundred north White Mountain Road. As required by state law, the property was posted and no public input was received. The Sholo Police Department conducted a background check on the applicants and found nothing amiss. The Department of Liquor Licenses and Control conducts its own internal investigations and background checks. Based on the investigator's findings and the recommendation of the city council, the State Liquor Board will decide whether to approve or deny the application. And just note that if the city council... And just note that if the city council chooses to recommend denial of the application, the motion must state the reasons for denial. And just to kind of give you a little background on this, it's just a, an addition of a name on the liquor license. They've already had this liquor license. It's not a new liquor license. Nothing's changing. It's just adding the name on to the liquor license. And the applicant is here if anybody has any questions. Thank you.
Ms. Hall, appreciate that. This time I'll open up to a public hearing. See if nobody run. I'll close it to the public hearing and turn it back to the council for motions or questions. Councilman Clark.
I just want to say to Darren and his wife that we appreciate you being in the City of Cholo. You're a phenomenal business. I think you're, you've been here for 30 years now or longer. It's been great to have Pizza Factory in our city. So we appreciate you being a part of our community. I know that the, the business does a great job of the anti-boling campaign. They give back a lot to the community. And so it's really, we really appreciate you choosing Cholo to be the community that your business is in. We, we are truly fortunate to have you as business owners here. So with that, I'll, I'll move to recommend approval to the state liquor board of the application submitted by Darren Van Warwick and Adam James Lewin for a number 12 restaurant liquor license on behalf of the Cholo Pizza Factory for its location at 100 North White Mountain Road, Cholo, Arizona.
Got a motion, got a second by the vice mayor. All those in favor of the motion? All those opposed, motion passed unanimously. Thank you, Councilman Clark. Next item on the, the agenda is consideration of authorization to use city council contingency funds for first annual Cholo rodeo. Yes. Mr. Short, welcome to your first meeting.
Was that your motion?
Yeah, that was.
Mayor, Vice Mayor and Councilman, thanks for having me here tonight. The staff requests a $60,000 from the city council contingency funds for the first annual Cholo rodeo to be held June 6th and 7th of 2025 at the Linden Valley Arena. This is as part of the agreement to improve the bleachers and shoots at the arena with the Perkins family. The city is allowed to have a rodeo event using that arena. This event will be a junior rodeo, a youth-focused competition designed for young riders ages five to 18 to develop and showcase their rodeo skills in a safe and structured environment. This, this event will maintain and build on the Deuce's Wild Rodeo legacy and showcase the city's western heritage. These events serve as stepping stones for young cowboys and cowgirls who aspire to compete in professional rodeo circuits. Staff is working on finalizing the competition list and ancillary event details. Events in junior rodeo generally include mutton busting, calf riding, steer riding, goat tying, barrel racing, pole bending, breakaway roping, tie-down roping, team roping, and mini bull riding. Staff originally planned to begin this event in June 2026, but launching the Cholo rodeo in this fiscal year 2025 will help build momentum and establish the event's foundation sooner. The event is expected to generate revenue through spectator attendance, contestant participation, and sponsorships directly supporting local businesses and the overall economy. Staff believes this event will start to break even after, in year three. Staff recommends authorizing $60,000 from the city council contingency funds for the 2025 Cholo rodeo and approving the associated budget transfers. So if you have any questions, please ask.
Thank you, Mr. Short. You know, I, I just want to personally thank the Perkins family. This has been something we've been working on for four or five years now and it's pretty exciting that, you know, we're starting with the junior rodeo and see where it goes from there. But it's, it's pretty exciting that, that, the work we're, we're doing with the Perkins family. You guys have been out there. It's, it's, they've got plenty of room. You know, during the ropings, it's another city. It's almost like NASCAR out there with all the horse trailers. It's, if you've never been out there, you got to go. It's pretty cool. But anyway, this is, this is pretty exciting and like you said, it's nice to start now and then we can build it up in the future. But it's, it's going to be, I, I don't know how many years it's been since we haven't had a rodeo, but it's nice that we can bring this back to our community for sure. But you have questions, comments, motions? Yes.
Yeah, Mr. Short and, and also Jay too. I want to take this opportunity to thank both of you as well as your entire team. Jay, I know that, I think I was talking to Morgan, Mr. Brown, the city manager, a week or two ago about, you know, all the things happening in the City of Cholo and what the planning, or what the Parks and Recreation Department, community service has been able to do over the, this last year. It's really been tremendous. So it's a, it's a testament to your leadership, to the, the team that you have and to Mr. Brown. And, and also to the council, I think, as far as wanting to make sure that we have things to do, not just for the citizens of Cholo, but also for when people come up and stuff like that. And so I want to applaud you, Mr. Brimall, for what you've done. It's been great to see that. And with that, I'll move to authorize the city council, authorize city council contingency funds for the first annual Cholo rodeo at Linden Valley Arena in an amount not to exceed $60,000 and approve the associated budget transfers.
Got a motion, got a second by Councilman Adams. All those favor the motion? All those opposed, motion passed unanimously. Thank you, sir. Good job. That was his rookie speech, I believe. Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is consideration of award of a construction contract for North 11th Street Sidewalk Improvement Project, City of Cholo Project Number R 2025. Mr. Hemsworth.
Mayor and Council, at the October 15th, 2024 city council meeting, the city council passed resolution R 24-31 to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the Arizona Department of Transportation to exchange federal surface transportation block grant funding for state HERF funds to construct North 11th Street Sidewalk Project. The HERF exchange program allows local communities the flexibility to complete projects with state funding and remove the excessive administrative requirements associated with federal funds. Funding received for the project was $555,300. Scope of the project is to reconstruct the east side of North 11th Street from East Cooley to East Huning. The project consists of removing old concrete asphalt, installing new ADA compliant sidewalk with ramps, roadside parking, concrete pavers, under its sleeves for future lighting and landscape improvements, as well as required drainage infrastructure, required flood improvements. Asphalt roadway and parking areas will be repaved and required signs and new pavement markings will be installed. City engineering staff designed the project with a construction estimate of $540,000. The project was publicly bid in accordance with statutory requirements with the following results. Western Grade LLC at $418,052.75. McCullough Construction LLC, $570,874.00. And surface contracting at $815,348.00. A low bid amount of approximately $418,000 is below the available budgeted funds of $555,000. During the project, staff may direct the contractor to perform additional work on the project site to utilize as much of the funding as possible for the City of Cholo. Additional work will be completed by issuing user-instructed scope provisions and will be presented to the city council during the project acceptance process. Staff recommends award of the construction contract for the 11th Street Sidewalk Improvement Project, City of Cholo Number R 2025, to Western Grade LLC in an amount not to exceed $418,052.75. The map's available and the bit tab's attached. I'm here for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hemsworth. Do you see, you're going through this on a daily basis. Do you see prices coming down?
No. This was a very, surprisingly a little bit, but we were happy to get it. For the contractors, the local contractors, we're excited to get the work done with the local contractor. But normally bids have been kind of hovering about, about stable right now. I'm not seeing them really come down yet.
I just, I was shocked with the difference between the high and the low. It's only caught my attention. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
I have a question. Shane, so will this, will we lose any parking spaces with the work that's going to be done there on, between Cooley and Hall? Or will we still have the same number of parking spaces that current? Because right now I don't think that we have any designated ones, but it seems like there's quite a bit of parking, especially on the weekends and stuff like that. Is there, like, how do you envision this happening as far as, like, will there be an increase in parking, less parking? Or what's that going to do to the local businesses there?
It should be pretty similar. You'll notice that there nothing's really designated down there. There's really no markings or where to park or paved or anything. People kind of park wherever they park. Nice thing about when you actually create a parking stall is it's limited to nine feet by 20 feet. They're not going to space out. But there are going to have to be the addition of the driveways. So you're going to have to add the driveways and each one of those entrances. And that's something that we've had to do anytime you do a downstream project is you have to maintain that driveway access so there will be no parking in that area. That's where we plop the trees in. We try to make it a little more aesthetic downtown feel. But our goal in these downtown projects is always to maximize the parking while still providing access.
And will there be parking, like, like the designated parking on between Hall and Huning, right there on, right by that, that area there?
No. So that area is going to receive a vertical curve and gutter, a nice six-foot sidewalk and trees and lights behind the sidewalk. But because of that drainage ditch that we all know is right there by the house restaurant, parking's not available to go in that location.
Okay, sounds great. Then I guess I'll move to, if nobody else has anything, I guess I'll get the.
You're on roll, go for it.
The hat trick tonight for.
Hat trick.
Yeah, exactly. Following USA's footstep with Canada the other day. I moved to award the construction contract for the 11th Street Sidewalk Improvement Project, City of Cholo Project Number R 2025, to Western Grade LLC in an amount not to exceed $418,052.75.
I got a motion, I got a second. Got a second. Councilman Judd, all those in favor of the motion? All those opposed, motion passed unanimously. Thank you, sir. You know, there is a big concern. Can, can you go back to that? Just sorry, Rachel, I know you were, you already get out of it. That, oh, the, the, between, right there. I know there's a concern about parking from East Hall all the way down to Huning, but you know, we're working on that with that little park area. So that'll help those businesses there. And I've talked to the owners of, of that area and they kind of like that idea, you know, of having some designated because people could, they park so close to that, that ditch right there that now this will keep them from kind of parking in it. So he knows, the, the businesses down there know that we're working on some parking there behind the library. So appreciate that comment. Okay, next item on the agenda is summary of current events, council members. Councilman Adams.
I just want to thank Timber Mesa for their presentation and just remind people to clean up around your houses, get everything ready so we can avoid any fire danger and we need to save our mountains. So just so everyone could do their part.
Thank you. Councilman Clark?
Yeah, just real quick, I just also want to thank Timber Mesa, thank the chief. Appreciate you guys spending some time with us today. That was very informative and, and we appreciate the information.
Yeah, I'll echo what the other council member said about Chief Chevalier. I've known Randy since high school and you're a testament to our community. We appreciate you and, and all that you and your team are doing, especially our fire marshal JD Pepper. I know that you guys have the best interest of the community at heart for this and so we appreciate that. The other thing I want to congratulate, the, the varsity girls basketball team. They are in the final four right now for the Cooper or Copper Division. For they, if they, if they beat, win the next game, they're in the state championship. So that is awesome. They, the, the coaches there, Coach Tinkle, Coach Francis, and Coach Moore have turned that program into a state powerhouse. And so we're hopeful that in the next couple of weeks, we'll be able to celebrate a state championship with them. Also, the, the Cholo High School wrestling team took second in divisionals over the weekend. They're wrestling for state this weekend. They have 10 wrestlers who are going. We have two who won divisionals or sectionals. I'm not sure how they exactly call it. We used to call it region, regionals back when I was in high school. And that is Max Frund and Dallin Rawling. So the two of them are section champions and we hope that they will bring home some hardware this weekend. That's a state championship that's down in Veterans Coliseum, so.
Nice. Thank you, Councilman Clark. Just to add to that, the send-off for the girls is this Friday at 11:30 on Cougar Lane. And I guess you go to Cow Ranch or whatever, but go to Cougar Lane, keep everybody out of the highway, but it's this Friday, send-off at 11:30. Funny thing about Chief Chevalier is I was on the, I've been on the fire department way too long, but I was on the hiring board that hired him.
You did good.
So I think about that, when I, when I first called him to get him as a volunteer firefighter, he was working in Snowflake, I believe, at McLaren's. So I called Randy, I said, hey, you need to get over here, we're hiring. Anyway, it's a long story, but it's pretty awesome. Randy's done a great job and I, I'm, I'm really proud of him, really am. Anyway, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just a couple of quick things. Just a reminder that we are accepting applications from citizens interested in serving on our aviation advisory committee, the Board of Adjustment, Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, and the Planning and Zoning Commission. The applications are available at City Hall or on the city's website at cholaz.gov. They're due on Tuesday, February 25th at 5:00 PM to the city's clerk's office. For more information, you can call 928-532-4061. For our Public Works Projects, we do have the contractor working on the manhole repairs in Torreon and other areas around town. Hopefully that'll finish up within the next week. That's all I got.
That's it? Wow. Anybody need seconds? How about scheduling meetings?
Well, just as in, because we're accepting those applications, if we do get sufficient applications to do interviews, we'll do those on March the 4th before our regular meeting. We'll just see how many applications we get. We may have to start at 5:00, 5:30, depending on how many applications we get.
So if they're, if they're already on the board, would we still do?
Probably not do an interview, but if they're new, we'd probably do an interview.
All right. If that's all, seeing no more business before this council, I adjourn this meeting. Thank you, guys.